Good evening and welcome to the Town of Monroe Planning and Zoning Commission. It's November the 3rd, 2022, and it is 7:00 PM. I am Michael O'Reilly, the chairman. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will next call the board, starting on my right.
Dominic Smiglino, alternate.
Brian Tonding, commissioner.
Bruno Maiene, vice chairman.
Robert Westlin, commissioner.
Nicole Lupo, alternate commissioner.
Rick Schultz, town planner.
Sarah Stroud, recording secretary.
Thank you. And we will not need to see the alternates as let the record show that Commissioner Ambrosi has joined the group.
And Cheryl.
Hi, everybody.
And Cheryl Valeri. Okay, general public participation. If there are any members of the public here tonight that would like to address the commission on any matters that are not on the agenda tonight or will be on the agenda in the near future, this is the time to do so. If anybody here is a person, please raise your hand. If there's anyone online, please raise your hand for general public participation. I don't see any hands raised. Then we'll move on to public hearings. First public hearing, SEP 2022-06, 16468, 143 Purdy Hill Road. This is a continuation from October the 20th. Any new?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Exhibit Number 5, engineering comments dated 11/2/2022. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and for the applicant?
Chairman, members of the commission, Raymond Britsia, Representative Gary Holmes of LC. I'd like to note that we were, we have made some plans which our engineer will take, change, and address all, I believe, all the concerns of the town engineer. More importantly, if you could remember, there was discussion about this possibility down the road of adding a lane to Purdy Hill Road. It's not, it's not in the plan, it's not ready yet, no one knows when it's going to happen. So what we did was, we took a possible portion that we created a lane, we're going to dedicate that to the town when we, when we close, or, you know, prior to getting our building permits, so that the town will never have to worry about if they decide to do it in the future that they will have to, you know, condemn or take the property. So we, we worked with the ZVA on Tuesday night, the ZVA approved it, so we now have everything in place, but we're just happy with our changes in the plans, we should be able to go forward fully. Why don't we take, let's take it through the different areas of the building.
I'm Tim Poole, engineer from BL Companies. So I'll do a quick rundown of the plans. I know you guys saw the majority of this last time. So the site, 143 Purdy Hill Road, located here, we have frontage of Purdy Hill Road off the top of the plan sheet, Monroe Turnpike, 111 on the side, and Spring Hill Road coming in from the bottom. The existing cul-de-sac is located right about here for Spring Hill Road. So the building is approximately 53 square feet or a little over. That is located here in the middle. It's three tenants, there's the proposed Chipotle located on the plan right, Jersey Mike's in the middle, and a third retail space on this left side. At this time, the tenant is unknown. We have 50 apartment spaces across the front and down the plan left side. 50 is compliant, matches the requirement for this type of use. The driveway is located here off of Purdy Hill Road. It is aligned directly opposite the driveway from the Chipotle's to maximize safety at that intersection and provide as much distance from the signalized intersection as possible. It does have a drive-through lane across the back for Chipotle. For Chipotle, their operations are that the window is for pickup only. It is not, there is no menu board for ordering, it's just pickup of orders placed online. So the drive-through, you know, traffic will come around the side, the entrance to the drive-through lane is here in the back. It widens out to two lanes, the near lane is the actual, like, queuing lane for the drive-through. The outer lane is a bypass lane if somebody needs to go around their wallet, or if they didn't realize it was pickup-only, they can exit safely around, around the corner. The pickup window is located up here in the top corner of the building, then they exit back into the parking aisle and then back out. The overall site layout was tweaked a little bit from the last time. We did add, there's a haps area up here in this corner, if that's for cars to pull forward, can't find a spot, they have a safe, a spot to safely turn around and get back out and maneuver over to the side parking out of the site. Added a crosswalk across the end of the, the end of the drive-through bypass lane for pedestrians to safely cross from the left side of the site over to the extended parking on the right.
Landscaping?
Yes, I was actually just covering that, that's the next plan sheet.
The issue was concerned about landscaping and protecting the neighborhood.
Yeah, we haven't set these plans yet. You changed them?
These were just done tonight.
We responded to the comments of the engineer. We were told to bring these through tonight. So we have all responses, we can, we're addressing all the engineering comments.
Tim, did you bring your copies or?
I did not, but if you guys wish, I could leave this copy here with you guys, it's up to you.
Yeah, I'd like.
Okay, yeah, and we'll obviously follow up with whatever copies that you need after. So jumping to the landscape plan, a couple of the comments from the last meeting were concerns for screening across the back, so we have added, it's a little hard to see, there's this line coming around the side with the X's in it. It comes all the way down the plan left and all the way across the back. That is a six-foot-high solid wood fence. And by solid, you know, there's no openings, there's no gap, so it's a complete visual barrier. And then across the back here, we've added a row of arborvitae's. So, you know, as it's growing, that'll provide more of the vertical screening and help any of the noise that may be coming from the site.
So the fence will also neighbor directly, let's call it, to the west on Purdy Hill Road, Mr. Sitrano.
What, you have over there? Yeah, you have a fence there too?
Yes.
Yeah, the fence, it starts up in this corner, comes all the way down to the corner, and then wraps all the way across the back over to this bottom corner. It's one continuous fence all the way.
Are you going to bring landscaping on that site over there by that fence or no?
This fence, so we have this spot right in here, I jump to the plan sheet. This is where our septic is located. This was the only spot on site after, I mean, we did, I think, 15 test pits on the site. This was the only area that had suitable soils for a septic. And in order to locate it there, we have to berm up that area. So top grade up here is eight feet higher than the parking lot. So together with the fence and the septic, it's going to provide quite a bit of visuals.
Almost 32 feet, right?
Yeah, and then.
So you have a.
The septic, we can't really plant much for trees or shrubs on it because you can't have the impact.
All right, what kind of fencing are you going to use? What is it, wood?
Yes, six-foot-high solid wood, it's not going to have any slats in it or any openings, so it's a complete solid visual barrier.
Right, because how close is that to the neighbor?
That is a few feet off of the property line. Yeah, there's an existing stone wall on the property line that we're retaining, so we're staying just inside of that.
So it's a decent-looking fence, right?
Yeah.
Stained or?
We certainly can if.
It'll be, it'll be, you know, we're not looking for a place, it'll be, it'll be, you know.
Yeah, I just don't have the plan, so that's why I'm asking that question, okay.
Quickly jump back to the landscape plan. So the rest of the landscape plan really hasn't changed much. We still have the row of shrubs across the front of parking, provide a visual barrier and soften any car headlights, the parking lot, things like that. A few trees, four across the front, another one on the side. We've got the decorative stone wall on the corner with some flowering granials for visual interest and to kind of bring in as much of the stone wall into the site as we can, that's throughout the neighborhood. And then there's some other landscaping around the building, helps soften the appearance and bring in some green space. One of the other comments from the last meeting was regarding the sidewalks. So what we've shown is along this side, we are planning to install the sidewalk across the property, so it goes from the corner here up to the corner. And then across the frontage, we are requesting of the commission that we can defer installation of that sidewalk in light of the future plans to widen the roadway. Since there's no design plans or anything like that, we have no way of knowing.
We're going either way, that will not be, we're requesting a deferral because we don't know what's going to happen with that, with that, with that area that we're dedicating to the town. So, you know, there would be no sense of putting sidewalks in that could get torn up. Or we're happy, we're happy for them. Either way, we just thought it'd make more sense to defer it until it's figured out what improvements are going to be happening along that road.
Well, you already dedicated that part to.
Correct, we're dedicating that, so then you're going to have, you're going to have, how wide is the piece that we're dedicating, 10 or 12 feet?
It's in that ballpark, yes. The new, so the existing line is right across here, and the proposed line is this other old line that's in here, so it's, it varies, it's not a uniform amount, but it's about 10 or 12 feet.
That's the Purdy, that's the Purdy Hillside?
Yeah.
Yes, yep.
So where's the bus stop on 111? I'm just thinking, the people that work at Goodwill and get up at the bus stop trying to walk over to Jersey Mike's and to.
The bus stop.
After them to take.
The bus stop is up on this side of the intersection if I.
That's Walgreens over there.
Yeah, there's no, there's no, there's no sidewalks along Walgreens side of Purdy Hill. Yeah, look, we're requesting a deferral, if the commission would like to see them in, we're okay with that.
No, no, I'm just trying to figure out how they can safely walk over to get food from that area without getting.
I mean, they're going to eventually put in sidewalks. It's just, do you have them put them in now where they might have to tear them up?
So, so how do we handle that? Because I know the town's not going to put the sidewalks in when they widen the road.
From DOT widens roads, they usually add sidewalks.
They do, DOT, that's not DOT road, that's our road.
That's.
To answer your question.
Per section.
Yeah, to answer your question, Leanne, an agreement goes in the land records along with the approval.
An agreement is going to go that if we, if we expand the sidewalk.
Right, so.
In the front.
Staff needs to hear what the consensus is when you get into deliberation.
Well, I don't, I, I don't have an issue with it as far as, you know, like, I can understand, like, people coming over from, from across the way may want to walk in front of there to get into there unless you have a path some other way to get in there. You understand what I'm saying? Because people like, that work at, across the street at Goodwill, unless you have some other way to get in there without walking down that street, then I don't have an issue.
The hard part is, I don't think there's a crosswalk on the south side of Monroe Turnpike, right?
There is.
There is. Where is it? Can I just here, it goes right across here. You know what, it's making various, putting sidewalks. I don't, we don't need a deferral, we're going to spend the money today or we're going to spend it down the road.
Right, right.
We're okay with putting the sidewalks in, if we can hit that crosswalk and have the ability to come into our property, we're good.
Right, because I think somebody else is going to develop the other corner.
Right, that's going to get developed to the south, and I do think.
Yes, and I think down the road a little bit too maybe, so, I mean, it's going to, and that's the kind of business that's going to draw people that want to walk there.
So right now, we have, it's on our property now, we are touching the property line.
We'll, we'll put the sidewalks in, I think we'll, it'll take the whole, it'll take, take up and around the corner, we're happy to do that, no problem.
Okay, go ahead.
And just to quickly wrap up, so from last time, for, to utilities, I don't believe we're on the other major comments from last meeting, but just to quickly finish up, utilities, they're not all shown on the plan, but we've got domestic water coming in from Purdy Hill Road, we've got propane tank located along the drive-through for the gas service, electrical transformer down in this corner, it'll bring in electric from the utility pole on the near side of 111. Dumpster enclosure in the back corner, that'll have a completely solid enclosure, so it won't have any visual, you won't be able to see it from any of the surrounding areas, and the landscaping does wrap to that so that the water to the, to the south, between the fences and the arborvitae's, they'll screen that. And then septic, like I mentioned before, is over here on the west. And for stormwater, we have a subsurface storage tank because groundwater was so high here, we can't get the necessary separation of groundwater, so we're storing it and slowly releasing it back into the, to the existing drainage system at the intersection.
We may be able to modify that in the future. There's currently discussion, I know Rick knows about it, you folks have had an 824 referral about the abandonment of Spring Hill, Spring Hill Road out here, which would provide us with more space to handle some on-site drainage that wouldn't have to be constructed underneath the driveway. So that may come back to you later as a, as a modification, but we can't do anything with that until common council acts on the abandonment. The other thing is, there was a town, which we would not like, the town engineer talked about having landscape buffers within the parking area. The problem with that is, go ahead, Tim, you can't. So, you know, when you have the trucks making deliveries and everything else, they tend to run right over the curbs, beat them all up.
Yep, so it's this location here, this little island here, and then there's a very small one over here as well, those are the three locations specifically that he identified.
If the commission wants us to kind of try and figure out what we can put in there, fine, we don't think it's very effective.
What's it going to be now, just regular island?
It'll be painted pavement markings, and so we did actually.
It's not going to be an island.
No, no, it'll, it'll be all continuous pavement, painted for safety, so no one parks there. We did reach out to our landscape architects and ask regarding that, and they felt the islands are so small, by the time we put in curbs, there won't be enough green space left for long-term healthy development.
And given the, the additional landscape, and we meet the landscaping requirements, and given the additional landscaping we put throughout, we thought we've put a pretty good job on the, on the green project.
I don't have an issue with that, I don't bother the commission.
I think that's it for, the only other thing is, we, you know, folks requested a couple of changes regarding the elevations. Mike, Rod goes on with us tonight.
You have more questions?
Yes.
The propane. Where's that going to be?
It's located right on this.
And what do you have, is it enclosed, what is it? Yep.
I believe, you may remember more.
How many gallon tank is it?
Underground?
My gut instinct is it will be underground.
Is it underground, how many gallons it is?
If you have it enclosed, it will not be just tanks out there.
Are you going to secure it if it's above ground?
Correct, yes.
Otherwise, if it's in ground, if it's underground, I don't really know, doesn't bother me.
Correct. With regard, you guys, you folks had some issues with regard to the elevations about making sure that we wrap the three sides.
Yes.
That are visible, we've, Mike can take you through it. We've also added a Chipotle sign above the takeout window. And then the whole building's wrapped except for the backside where the delivery end is. Mike, maybe you can just, if you want to do it real quick? Take care of that man.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, is he going to share the screen?
Mike, share the screen and do a really, a quick.
I seem to have lost audio of the, of the chambers, unfortunately.
All right, go ahead.
I think you said he can't hear.
It's coming on.
Can you hear us now?
Oh, I see if it made the host. I'll go ahead right now. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I want to go over just a couple of the changes to the elevations that were made in response to some of the comments the board members had made previously.
Here we go.
And here you should be able to see my screen, so the main changes to the elevations are on the side elevation with the pickup lane and the rear elevation from some of the comments. This elevation right here, the comment was made to make it more like the corresponding elevation on the other side of the building, so the brick base was added, the larger area of clapboard was added along with the eaves. Cornice, you have some details along the side, and then the existing eaves on the side was kind of pulled back, as well as more awnings was at, were added to match the rest of the, the building design. On the rear elevation, the comment was added to bring the brick base back around, and so it's been added back along here. Lastly, as regards to the pylon sign, the comment was made, if we could lower that, and it's been lowered from 20 feet down to 15 feet. On this elevation, that would have the three tenant sites for Chipotle, Jersey Mike's, and future TBD tenant.
Okay.
I, I think we've, those were the concerns that I remembered.
Unfortunately, I am not able to hear anybody at the moment. So hopefully I can remedy that shortly.
So we feel, those were the major concerns, I think, I think we've created a better building, a better site, and one that's more sensitive. With that, I hope that the commission thinks we've satisfied all your requirements with special exception, and we've, in respect to the request of approval, we hopefully will be in the ground within 30 to 45 days after, after receiving approval and appeal periods expire.
All right, started the other commissioners and see if there are any questions. We'll start on my right.
I think you answered everything that we came up with last time. You said you wanted to start construction right away.
Yeah, we're, we, our goal is to deliver by June 1st, deliver half Chipotle open, normally, so our clients done a number of these, and they have, they have got the process down, so we will, we'll close as soon as we can and get this thing moving.
Thank you.
I think it looks great, I mean, the additions, I guess Bruno was right.
I usually am, so I don't know why you're questioning it.
It's kind of weird, actually, that you question.
No questions.
It's kind of weird.
I'm good.
Okay, you don't have any questions here?
I go last.
Oh, you go first.
Much better, much better, I mean, honestly, in my honesty, I don't like the sign, but I know it's in our regulations. I'm not a big huge pylon sign guy, so that's, that's not my thing, but it's allowed, so we allow it. My question is, can you go back to the first page? Maybe the second page?
Second one, landscaping?
Sure. Let's go with that one. So you're putting a sidewalk in on the Purdy Hill side, correct?
Correct, yes.
And that's going to wrap to the 111 side, right?
Correct, yes.
And it stops where?
It stops at the corner of the property down here.
Okay, so, fine, but my, my concern is.
I think we will agree also that should Purdy, Spring Hill Road get abandoned, that we will fill up, we will sidewalk.
This is amazing, you're a freaking mind reader.
We will sidewalk, we will complete.
I'm a little nervous because there's so many things in my mind, and if you can read that, what else are you reading in my mind?
I'm afraid.
Yeah, because you're going to, you're going to, you're going to be hearing all that, right? Isn't part of that property that's on there, isn't part of our tag?
So what happens, Spring Hill Road?
I guess I'm done.
Then when they, when they abandon it, it gets split down the middle, so I understand.
So you'll move it down as you went.
And we will agree to.
Go to your part.
Our southernly property line.
I know she owns part of it.
So we should, that is a condition, no problem.
Yeah, so it, it's not, like, I understand where you're, like, yes, because going with some of these other properties in town, I just really like to stay uniform, right? I love the project, I think it's beautiful, I think, great job with the screening for the neighbor, thank you for listening to their concerns, because that's, that's literally at the end of the day, that's what it's about. A consistency amongst every project in town, right? We, we ask of X property to do it, we have to ask of you guys to do the same, so I appreciate it. And the propane tank, do we know how big it is?
It's, we don't know the exact number yet, the mechanicals haven't been fully designed, so we don't know the true load. We're expecting somewhere in the neighborhood of like 1,200 gallons, like 1,000.
There's no gas there?
No, we, we had.
What does the bakery use?
To be honest, I'm not entirely sure. Our surveyors couldn't find anything, and we reached out to the gas company.
I have gas at my house, I'm like two, a street over.
Yeah, there's not gas on 111?
So I'm just, I mean, whatever, but I'm just saying.
I thought there was.
I know it goes to.
I'm literally a street over and I have gas.
May not go down that far, I don't know.
But I mean, I don't know if they would connect.
I don't know, if we can find.
I'm just.
Gas in the street, we prefer that over propane.
Absolutely, no, true.
So if we can get it, if we can get it, we'll get it, if not, the propane will either be underground or will have a, an enclo, an enclo, be behind an enclosure.
I have a feeling there's, there's gap, I mean, I should ask that neighbor, because that neighbor, where is he at?
He's behind the.
Come on up, I got a question for you. You can state your name and all that good stuff.
Rex Sitrano, the neighbor of 159165 Purdy Hill Road.
Awesome, do you have gas at your house?
Propane.
Propane.
Yes, no natural gas line by our house.
It's weird, I'm literally a street over.
It must be, it goes up cutters, and I think it's stopped.
All right, thank you.
Of course, thank you.
And what do you think about the fence, by the way?
Well, I appreciate you taking care of the neighborhood, and I like that very much. My only concern or question is, are arborvitae's in addition to the ideal for the noise pollution? If they cannot do it, you know.
It's hard with the, it's hard with the septic there.
Then I'm going to accept what they can do and.
At least the fence, the fence is nice, so, okay.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Keep in mind, one of the things being, because of the berm that's being created, the parking will sit basically 10 feet below.
No, it's, 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 it's way better than, yeah, having the fence is nice. And I understand with the septic, obviously, you don't want to put something on top of it or around it, I get it. Good job, I'm done.
Okay.
On the other side of the berm.
I mean, you're going to.
From the back of the septic system, how does that grade go transition?
On this outside edge, correct. So we're grading down pretty uniform, right?
You just said it was like three feet from the property line, right?
The fence is, yes. So at the back corner, we grade down pretty close, and the grading stops right at the bottom of the fence. As we get closer to Purdy Hill, there's a little bit more green space, flat land between the bottom of the berm and the septic and the fence.
What we're getting to is that you're starting to, being mindful tonight, but we don't have a lot of room where we start our grading, so that we'd be, we'd be having to plant trees on a slope, there's not room to plant them, so they grow straight up.
So the fence is on top of the berm or?
On top.
After the berm, after the grade, okay.
It'll be on top as you, as you're closer to the, to the southern part of it, and it'll be just off as you, as you get closer to Purdy.
What do we see on that transition? Are there going to be some junipers or, I mean, what?
That's all going to be seeded in this area because it's not, it's not like a critical storefront area. It could be seeded with like a conservation mix or something like that, if you wanted to see it, you know, more like a meadow mix, we can do something like that, or it could be maintained green space that, you know, right now, we have it as maintained green space, but that, that's something.
Because of the septic, nothing would have any healthy deep roots.
Correct, yeah. It's a, it's a big transition on the front side. You're talking about 10, 10 feet of elevation.
There is a decent bit of grade change on the, on the street side as well, yes. We kept it as close to the site as we can. Unfortunately, because of the soil conditions, we did have to push it out close to the street.
Got it. That's all I have.
No, no question, this one, I have no questions.
All right, now let's go to the public. So if anyone in the room that has any further comments or questions on this proposal?
Yeah, sorry.
Well, come on up front.
Right, so try it once again, just one quick question. I was wondering if the parking lot and the drainage and all that would be affecting the well of the neighboring home 159 Purdy Hill Road?
Is that your only question or?
That's that's my only, yeah.
Everything else is good, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Not being an engineer, but seeing that everything grades down and away from fifty-nine and then everything, I believe, if I could remember, ties out to Purdy Hill Road east of the property. I I everything is about as far away as it could possibly be and would have to be turned upside down to run contrary to.
Flowers are raised from.
Correct, everything's everything cheats away from from the from the property.
Thank you.
Sweet.
Are there any other members of the public online that would like to comment on this application? Hearing none. Um I think you've done a very good job and very accommodating. I wish all the applicants were half as accommodating as you and I don't see any reason why we shouldn't approve this. For now, you said you'd like to close it, so we will close the um hearing at this point. Thank you. We'll move on to uh subdivision and site development plan review. We do have a subdivision plan tonight. This is SDP twenty twenty-two dash oh one, file number one five one. This is seven fifty-four Main Street. This is continued from October the twentieth. And Rick, do we have any other exhibits on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh exhibit one, application set. Number two, letter of extension from solely engineering. Number three, second letter of extension because of the commission delay. Number four, revised plans from solely engineering dated ten nineteen twenty twenty-two. Exhibit number five, uh town engineer comments dated eleven to twenty twenty-two. That is all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank. And uh for the applicant, we have.
Green space, no doubt.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Mary Blackburn. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with Philly, uh excuse me, Philly Engineering offices here at five oh one Main Street.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, I I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person. Um could I share my screen? I have a presentation.
Yeah, you should be outside, Mary.
So here we have the um site development plan um and the applications for additional outdoor storage. Uh I'll go over briefly what we we had last time we were here in front of you and then and revisions we've made since um in working with the Wetlands Commission. Again, here's seven fifty-four Main Street um along Route twenty-five. Here's the site, Main Street on the left over here. You can see the wetlands shaded in blue and the turquoise line is the upwind review area. And here we have the existing building and parking area that function for the existing operation of Stone Farm. If you remember from last meeting, application is for um proposed outdoor storage for natural boulders, reclaimed granite, um architectural elements, blue stone, sandstone, um those types of materials that you can see here. And again, here's a close-up of the site. Um so you can see kind of the areas that are being proposed for storage. This is existing. This is the plan we had last time we were in front of you. Um just to refresh your memory, we had um proposed outdoor storage in the yellow areas, which were existing paved areas. We had uh additional proposed outdoor storage in the kind of magenta areas, which would remain lawn. We had additional areas in the green that you see here, which would remain woods. And we were proposing storing boulders in the existing wooded area. And then in the orange peach area, um we were proposing milling for outdoor storage. That time, we have um gone through wetlands and received a conditional um wetlands approval. The changes that were made in working with the commission and responding to the some of the town engineer's comments were that we eliminated the um storage area that was proposed in the wooded in the woods essentially. And we eliminated the milling and reduced this area in the south that was previously proposed as all milling. We added and more clearly defined like the drive areas where the equipment or trucks might bring in um these storage items. And we're proposing at the request of the Wetlands Commission um a road base material to stabilize just the drive area and then the drive area up here as well. And then the more, I guess, long-term or outdoor display areas um around this drive would remain grass. And this area would become road base as well, uh adjacent to existing paved um driveway. We did receive comments from the town engineer and um we submitted a response to those um two weeks ago. With the conditions of the wetlands approval would require test pit um in the proposed basin areas. Oh, and since the last time we did expand this basin across the drive to capture some of the runoff that was flowing in this direction. And there was a comment from the town engineer that we were showing the map FEMA area. And he he preferred that we um use the the elevation, which would be four twelve point five. And that would actually follow more of the wetlands line that you see in blue here. One of his other comments uh was that if we use the four twelve elevation, that there's also an area on this side of the site. Um and some of this proposed storage is in that four twelve elevation. Uh our response is that, you know, this whole it's detached because the the building, the parking, this whole area of the site are at an elevation of four fifteen. So in order for this area to flood, you know, it would have to actually overtop the whole building um in this whole area. So uh our response is that this is detached and um, you know, not considered in the flood plain. We did receive additional comments yesterday. Um I not too many, but some of them were reiterating the wetlands comment. But two of the comments that were new, um I can read those and and kind of walk you through our responses. The town engineer's first comment was that outdoor storage should not be located within landscaped islands, areas respective to parking that are otherwise serving the function of zoning compliance. Equipment access to such storage areas will present a safety hazard to state parking function. Um so currently, the proposed islands that would be used for storage are um outlined in magenta. And this is a grass island where just like landscape boulders would be stored. And really with the function or or how they currently operate, um it's just employee parking. I'll actually go to the plan, you can see it better. But really, the only parking that's used uh is right here in front of the building, this area. And maybe some of the first few spaces here. Really, none of this parking, which is furthest from the building, is utilized and that's really where they would access um the storage in this island. I'll also mention that they are overparked by turn spaces, so you know, again, these aren't really being used. The second comment was that outside storage should not be located within paved areas directly adjacent to parking or access aisles without some permanent means of separation or control. Equipment access to such storage areas will present safety hazards unless controlled with specific access points not in conflict with parking or access to the same. Um I don't think it was actually clear, so maybe this is why this comment was brought up, but the access to the site, this is the main entrance drive, and it kind of circulates around the building like this. The parking area is really limited to the front area of the building. And then most of the outdoor storage operations are in the back, as you can see in here. The really parking, you know, in here and here, um the access would be separate um with the exception of this island, which I just discussed. The last comment was about a bond recommendation. Uh the the bond recommendation we provided once the bond estimate is submitted. So we submitted a bond um estimate for wetlands. Really, most of the work is within the upwind review area. So the estimate that we provided um kind of encompassed all of the work. And uh we would request that a bond, an additional bond not be required. And you can kind of see that here. Um the turquoise area encompasses the upwind review area, so the only part that aren't in the upwind review area is a small bit here. And then the upper portion of this circle, everything else is upwind review. And with that, if you have any questions, um I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, thank you. Go to the commissioners for questions. I'll start on my right.
Dominic?
No questions, thank you.
No questions. Yeah, I gotta, he asked, uh, town engineer asked about hopefully this test pit for the basin. Did you have any data on that yet or are you going to do it? You said you're gonna do it at the time of construction?
Yeah, so we requested that we would do it um prior to construction. I believe that that will is a requirement of the wetlands approval that the test pit um be done, so.
What happens if it doesn't meet the requirement? What happens if it doesn't meet the requirements? You gotta come back in front of us?
Yeah, at that point, well, we would do it as like a construction revision and um we submit any substantial changes.
What's the total outside storage you want here?
I'm sorry, what was that?
It's a total outside storage you're proposing.
The total is now twelve point nine three percent.
Twelve point what?
Twelve point nine.
Thirteen percent?
Yeah.
What does that equal out in square feet for that?
That is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand square feet or almost um three acres.
This is a twenty-two point five acre, five acre site. Twenty-two point five acres.
For the size of that building, how much outdoor space do we have?
We allow up to forty. Remember, we bumped it up to forty.
Forty percent? They're at thirteen. Okay, thank you. No questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Very good. I think I I like this plan a lot better than the last plan, staying out of the um wooded area and um see, the only area that Scott was concerned about is really just the front area and it's not really a landscape island either, I don't think. So I'm good with the um plan that you're presenting tonight.
What about the bond? What about it?
The requesting that the wetlands bond satisfy the planning and zoning instead of doubling it.
What's the bond? How much is the bond?
Mary, do you know what the uh what your number showed?
It was forty thousand is what um the uh I'm sorry, what the town engineer recommended and we agreed to.
Okay, I'm good with that. I mean, it's mostly wetlands that you're dealing with here. There's no new construction except for road bases.
Yeah, what do you think, Rick? What do you think, Rick?
That's a reasonable amount to cover both boards.
There we go. You okay with that?
Green, that was a forty K.
Then um. What about Leon? Is he okay with it?
Mary, do you have anything else that you want to add or do you want to close the hearing?
No, yes, thank you. We would request that you would close and and thank you for your time.
Hey, thank you.
Now, did public have to talk or no?
No. Thank you. We don't want the public.
I do always listen to you.
Schleifen, we look good.
All right, so we can go right on to deliberations and terminations. D one, we have two um applications that we can deliberate on tonight. And the first one is SCP twenty twenty-two dash oh six, file number sixteen forty-six A.
I'll make a motion to approve SCP twenty twenty-two oh six, file number one six four six A as drafted.
Motion needed.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There was a lot of discussion, which I added.
The motion and the second. Pump the brakes.
Second, second, motion and a second. Is there any discussion, Rick?
Oh, yeah, everything, thank you. Rick, let's discuss.
The conditions will be as follows. Adherence to the recommendation of the town engineer with the exception of the landscape islands.
Yeah.
Uh including the bonding. Provide sidewalks along the Purdy Hill Road and Monroe Turnpike uh extending to the uh Spring Hill Road area. If that property is conveyed, is discontinued. So we put that in.
Not if.
Oh, it's subject to town council on Monday, so.
I'll talk to them.
Uh revise architectural plans by providing the same front elevation treatment to the Easterly elevation and extending the uh brick veneer to the entire rear of the base. Provides solid fencing slash evergreen plantings along the southerly and westerly property lines for buffering and screening. Now, staff is going to work uh with the property owner on the westerly side. We're gonna try to get some evergreens in there, but a- as you heard, i- it's uh being uh filled significantly for the leaching field. But we're gonna try to get some in there.
Fence there, right? So that's.
Uh provide conveyance of the property to the town for future road purposes, subject to the review and approval of the town attorney. That's for the third lane. And the leaching area shall be seeded with wildflower mix. Is that a consensus? Uh i- it aesthetically it'll look better or you just want lawn?
I want Kentucky bluegrass over there. He said he was gonna maintain it. I mean.
You want lawn or you want uh wildflower mix?
I'd like to see. I think it'll be a nice lawn. I think I would, I'd keep it like, he said he's gonna maintain it.
Your call.
I mean, if he's maintaining it, I want lawn. Yeah.
Okay, I'll knock that out, okay?
Thank you.
It's shown as one on the uh. Okay, those are the uh revised conditions from your draft. Okay, uh the uh rule calls in order. Go ahead.
Whoa, we have discussion, go ahead. The the Chipotle sign that they're adding, they don't go over sign, do they?
No.
It's still allowed.
Because it's a separate wall uh face, yeah.
No, just making sure because not that it matters, it looks awesome, so it looks a lot better. Right.
And they knocked down five feet on the poles.
It still doesn't matter.
I'm pleased, fifteen's better than twenty.
You're happy. Yeah, and then the propane tank, make sure that if it's up above ground. Yeah, it's got. And it's has a safety features to it.
Pollards.
Pollards, yeah.
And I have a propane tank. If ground mounted shall be screened, shall be enclosed.
Some kind of a pad too.
For sure. Shall be enclosed on pad.
Yeah, for sure. That's a that's a big old tank. Big tank. Twelve hundred.
Underground.
Most likely it's gonna go onto ground.
Underground would be great.
They can ledge over there, they may not be going.
Like on the roof.
On the roof.
You never know.
Put it in the third, the third rental.
That's wrong. The tank's inside.
That whole, that whole third spot will be.
All right, is there any other discussion?
No, I'm good.
If not, we'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainie, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, the draft has been approved.
He's doing personally.
Okay, going on to the second item for deliberation tonight.
The way they've been moving, I believe.
We have site development plan, SDP 2022-01, file number 151, 754 Main Street. Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve SDP 2022-01, file 151.
A motion?
Need a second.
Motion and a second. All right, discussion? This is the one we just heard.
I think it's a no-brainer. It's nice to see a Monroe business thriving and growing, and it's all organic materials. The guy owns the property, he's a real officer.
No, it is awesome.
And your text amendments on the outdoor storage is coming into play.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, I added to the condition, the Illinois Wetlands Commission bonding will satisfy the planning and zoning commission bonding requirement.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, we'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainie, yes.
Westland, yes.
The site development plan, pass. Okay, we have a couple of pending minute meeting, pending meeting minutes to go over. You know, everyone have the number 15, October 6, and October the 20th, minutes before the 15.
Chairman, I have a question about the minutes.
Yes.
Didn't there be some content in the minutes?
Yes.
It almost seems like a, like a reverse agenda, you know, when you read it. Because when I missed a meeting last session, I was reading through the minutes and it definitely really freaked the.
Which one are you referring to?
The 15?
15's got zero.
It looks like there might be.
It's definitely a good one of the order of the meeting, but as far as any content as a discussion or.
Yeah, there's nothing there. The 15th doesn't tell you anything.
So what happened? You should look at that again, maybe.
We'll relook at that, okay.
All right, let's go to October 6. I heard there wasn't much on October 6, and there were some votes which were reported. I wasn't here, I don't know.
I was here.
That was the Burnham meeting.
This is.
It was a great meeting.
It was a breeze, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we really didn't have much comment on the church, except welcome to town.
They won't, they won't give me a big meeting.
Yeah.
All right, so. 6 is fine.
I'll make a motion to approve October 6, 2022, regular meeting minutes as drafted.
Second. Okay, have a motion and a second, we'll call the roll.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
Mainie, yes.
Westland, yes.
We don't need to seat someone, right?
No, I understand from that. Okay, then we have October the 20th.
Yeah, October 20th.
Does have.
It's loaded.
I can change it.
It's a good minute.
Discussion.
I think you're dying that day.
Chair, entertain a motion for the October 20th.
A motion to approve meeting minutes of October 20th as drafted.
A motion, need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? No. If not, call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
And then we have.
Mainie, yes. So it's four yeses. Good job. Well done.
Okay.
Mike's in a.
Now, we want to add to the agenda at this point, a planning and zoning matter. I would like to add the appointment of Cheryl Valerie as our new zoning enforcement officer. I need a motion to add this to the agenda.
I'll make a motion to add the planning and zoning matter.
I need a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right, well, let's introduce.
Hold on. I don't think we can do a roll poll vote.
For unanimous, you can.
No, you need to vote. Adding it to the agenda.
Are we allowed to do it as a roll poll vote when we have digital and not? I think that was.
It's unanimous, yes.
Okay, you sure?
Yes.
Okay, you have the new thing in front of you.
So, let's introduce Valerie. Rick, you want to introduce Valerie?
Yeah, Commissioner members, I'd like to introduce Cheryl Valerie. She is from Fairfield. She did her training in initial career in the city of Norwalk. She brings a wide, so what I'm looking for, a wide wealth of.
Alex.
I'm looking at Bruno, I lost my train of thought. We are glad to welcome her as part of the team. As the commission is aware, she is a combined wetlands and zoning. Wetlands will be appointing her next Wednesday, but we are very pleased to have her on board. I've been driving around town with her. She started on Wednesday. And we look forward to many years with the staff and the commission. As Joe had done, she will be doing the reports to, Joe retired, Mr. Chapman retired. I will be.
I would have sent them a present.
I will be assisting Cheryl in preparing the reports, so you'll have an update on zoning enforcement related matters.
Cheryl.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Our last zoning enforcement officer was too nice of a guy.
Too nice? So you want me to be tough? Okay, no problem. I can do that.
Especially, check out Bruno's property.
Mr. Chairman, do we get two motions?
Yeah.
We're going to vote next.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. So do you have a pistol permit?
I'll tell you off record.
It's not a requirement, it's like.
We're known as a tough town here, Monroe, for a federal community.
I'm ready.
All right, so Cheryl, entertain a motion to appoint Cheryl A. Valerie as zoning enforcement officer.
I make a motion to appoint Cheryl A. Valerie as zoning enforcement officer.
I have a motion, I have a second. We'll call the roll, starting on my right.
Condon, yes.
Ambrosi, yes.
O'Reilly, yes.
Mainie, yes.
Westland, yes.
Okay, it is unanimous. Cheryl.
I'm looking at Bruno. Okay, we're going to move along.
I don't have the meeting scheduled here. Do you have the meeting scheduled for next?
I will suck the.
Oh, I don't have that at all.
Actually, there do we actually.
We don't have that.
What are we doing?
We have the meeting schedule.
Schedule, Frank, shoot.
He does.
Yes, so I'm gonna.
We don't have it.
We don't have it.
You don't need it.
Yeah, we need it.
You don't need it.
Why not?
He's just going to tell us what it is. All right, first and third Thursday, January, February, March, April, May, June. Staff is recommending again, because you enjoyed this past year, one meeting July and August. Is that the consensus?
Sure.
That would be July 6 after the holiday.
Yeah.
August 3. Now, I'm also recommending that you have one meeting in December, insofar as the second meeting for next year is December 21. That's pretty close to the holiday.
Yeah.
Agreed?
Agreed.
So two meetings, except for July, August, and December.
The meeting in August.
The August 3?
August 3.
So can we have a written copy for the next meeting that we, to approve?
Yes.
Okay. But that sounds good so far.
Great job, Rick.
All right, next we have Chairman's report. I don't have anything to report.
Except for a meeting next Monday.
Well, that, you can tell them about that. Commissioners' report. Do we have any commissioners with anything to report? Buddy? No? All right. Now, Land Use Staff Report, Rick?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we're meeting next Monday.
This Monday?
Yeah, this Monday coming up. The 7th, right?
5:30.
5:30 in the old library. And we are taking up a variety of issues, including native plantings again. Also, we're taking up the mixed use, the Main Street Design District. Remember, we started discussing the allowance of apartments under the 15 acre?
Yes.
So we got to give that a lot of thought, because the commission's got to feel comfortable. We're going to continue on the dog boarding in the industrial and commercial zones, because that is a hot ticket in the market, and we do not allow that currently. And you will be seeing your first detached affordable housing, I mean, first detached accessory dwelling unit. Remember the gentleman?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What do you mean? He's coming, coming in?
Actually, I want to show, yeah, I want to show you the copy, because I told him to modify the drawings. Remember the drawings he submitted?
I know.
The house?
Yeah, I know.
Didn't look like an accessory.
Yeah, no, that's not going to work.
He's going back to his architect, too. And that is all.
Okay, Cheryl, entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion. Second. All in favor?